Yes. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:30. We'll call William Johnston.
Here.
Tom Graffanino.
Here.
Lisa Krakler.
Here.
Phil Diorio is here. Lynn Colligan has been excused. We also have President Stephen Kiley, Town Attorney. Who's got the volume on on there?
That guy.
The first order of business is to review and approve the January 25th, 2023 minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, first order of business tonight, we're going to open a hearing. It's due, I'm going to call it a hybrid hearing. We're going to, we're having the hearing on 71B, Northwestern Parkway. And as part of that, we're going to work on this interpretation of the town code, Section 13312F, as requested by the Building Department. This is something that the Building Department included in the denial letter, saying that they needed a variance for this. And the applicant said that, you know, this was probably not true. And so the Building Department asked us to interpret the code for them. And so we're going to have a little bit of a discussion here on this. I'm going to first refer to 13312F. And what that talks about is the development of lots and their requirements. And it says that when natural vegetation exists, a shoreline vegetative buffer of a minimum of 75 feet shall be maintained landward. And there's a bunch of other things that come on after this. But that's really the sticking point here. And so a neighbor, Mr. Domon, felt that we did have to act on this as a ZBA and have a variance hearing on this. We decided at our last hearing to take a look at this. Everybody study the code a little bit and see what we think applies. I have taken a good look and, you know, the heading for 13312 talks about how properties in the nearshore and peninsula overlay district, in accordance with the map, notwithstanding other requirements as chapter, says properties that contain wetlands must comply with Chapter 129 of the Code of the Town of Shelter Island, which is the wetlands local law. And then specifically in 13312C, it talks about the shoreline vegetative buffer. And in there, the last sentence in that is, "The shoreline vegetative buffer shall be subject to the provisions of Chapter 129, and activities within that area shall require a permit specified in Chapter 129." So for me, what that says is that the writers of this provision meant that these things were supposed to be dealt with in the wetlands permit process. And I went through the whole wetlands permit process. And in there, there's a whole bunch of things that you have to do. And not one of them says anything about going to the ZBA for something in the vegetative buffer. As a matter of fact, I'm just going to, oh, I don't have that. I have to get on the computer for that. But there's a section where it talks about how many copies of things have to be brought to the town. And then the town clerk distributes them. And they go to the town board, to the WMAC or the WAC. And then they also go to the planning board. Nowhere does it say that they're supposed to ever come to the ZBA. So I personally feel like this is not in our domain. But I'm happy to hear what the rest of you feel on this.
You explaining it as written there is pretty clear.
Right. In the 19 years I've been on this board, we've never had it. It's always been the town board is handling it or the planning board. Right. Go ahead, Lisa.
I think in the whole sphere of the law, it's, you know, we are, we want to protect the wetlands. And we have an entire chapter dedicated to that. And to have a double process in place, it might be a little bit redundant in that regard. And it does, you know, clearly reference that chapter.
Right. And for me, you know, the telling thing is that, you know, this was amended in 2003, after the rest of this section of the code was installed. And I think that that line there is, it was put in there to make sure that these applications went to the town board as part of the wetlands hearing process, permit process. And so I personally think that it would be a mistake for us to create some sort of redundancy. We're going to send people, taxpayers on this island, to a place where they have to have the same hearing twice. And I think that's a disservice to the taxpayer. Does anybody else here have anything else that you want to put in on this?
Just want to chime in real quick. The wetlands code was amended in its entirety in 2003. So that's probably when they amended this section to say, hey, wait a minute, everything's going to the town board for review with anything to do with the buffer. And that's why I put that in there. And the rest of the code wasn't amended in kind, which should have been at that time. But I think this standalone provision will take it out of your jurisdiction and put it within the town board's jurisdiction.
Okay.
What year was it amended? What year was it amended?
2003.
2003. So I guess at this point, I guess we're going to open this up to the floor. And I imagine that there might be some few people out there in Zoom land that might want to comment on this. So Christina, will you see if anybody wants, they can raise their hand and contribute to the conversation here? No, no. Yeah.
I have a comment if I could.
Sure, Mr. Domon, please, please do.
Yeah, thank you. So my first comment is that the quotation at the beginning of the code section anticipates that there are other code requirements in other chapters. Because it specifically addresses this stating, notwithstanding other requirements of this chapter or other chapters of the town code, which may be applicable to those same situations, referencing the nearshore district in 13312. And that the amendment that was referenced regarding in the 2003, you know, didn't negate this code, this zoning code. The idea behind it, because it says notwithstanding, is that this is such an important topic that there are, that the code asks for checks and balances regarding building structures within the vegetative buffer. And also, I wanted to say in this regard that that every other, every zone on Shelter Island, particularly for residential purposes, A and AA, address rear yard setbacks. And this code section at 13312 recognizes that the rear yard setback is not the typical 30 feet from the property line, but has to be extended, hence the 75 feet vegetative buffer. The nearshore district then is recognizing the differences that are needed for the rear yard setback. So by not addressing a variance within the 75-foot buffer, one is in effect saying, we're not going to establish a rear yard setback for building structures. You could put a building structure right in front of the bulkhead, for that matter.
Mr. Domon, no, because you would have to go to the town board for a wetlands.
I know it. Look, I understand that part. I get that part that you have to go before the wetlands. But as far as the zoning code says that all you have to do is go before the wetlands, this is establishing a rear yard setback. Just like every other lot has a rear yard setback, so do lots in the nearshore district have a rear yard setback. And that is addressed in 13312. And by not addressing the rear yard setback, you are in effect saying, we don't want to get involved with rear yard setbacks. But more significantly, it feels like it is, if you don't like the code, then by all means, someone can make a motion at the right channels to change the code. But as it stands now, the code says, this code not, is notwithstanding other requirements, i.e. Chapter 129. And so 129 does not supplant 13312. It directly addresses this.
Mr. Domon, I just want to chime in on that point. The section of the code you keep referencing, that notwithstanding other requirements of this chapter, that predates the amendment to 13312C. And the argument is, is that that section of 13312C trumps that reference. And then also, in Rules of Statutory Construction, you don't want to have two competing approvals. So which one would trump the other? If you get relief from the zoning board for intrusion into a buffer, and then go to the town board for a wetlands permit, and they don't agree with which one is going to trump it. So you want only one body to have approval authority. And I think that's what it made clear when they updated in 2003. They made a decision that the town board would be the ultimate authority on wetlands and wetland buffers.
Well, just one other, one other quick comment on that is that, you know, there are other aspects of the zoning code that still do apply. This is a double A-zone lot. And so they are here for a side yard setback variance, because that is part of the code. But this specifically talks about that this thing with the vegetative buffer is the business of the town board and not the business of the ZBA.
And then also, and one other thing, and then I'll let you speak, Mr. Domon. You said, you know, if you don't like the code, you can petition the town board to change it. But they're fulfilling their role as interpreting a somewhat ambiguous code. And they're interpreting it in a way that makes reasoned sense.
Yeah. I would like to make a reference to the 133F3 that says that you cannot have a structure with a bathroom within 100 feet of the shoreline. That has nothing to do with, you know, the definition of a natural vegetation or not. It's a straight, it's a straight, straight up language from the code. And that's, that makes it, that's a, that's an added section beyond the 75-foot vegetative buffer. And I think that we're in the effort to not, look, this has been addressed to the point where, you know, that the board could, can approve or not approve the application that was pending. And that the public notice was submitted saying that there's an application for variance from 13312. And to that point, I think that there is a distinction between an interpretation of a code and simply not following the code. Not every code is, the code is not, the existence of the code is not, is not at issue here. There's a code section that deals with the nearshore. And what I understand, the comment, the commentary is such that this entire code should be stricken from the record. Because 13312 should no longer be in the zoning chapter. But it is in the chapter, and it was not taken out. And it was, it was left in despite the amendment because it is designed, it says that it is not supposed to be supplanted by other zoning chapters. It is such an important issue to Shelter Island that we need to check checks and balances.
Mr. Domon, what you're talking about is checks and checks. All right. That's, there's no checks and balances. What you're talking about is making people go through the same process two times. So to me, as opposed to checks and balances, it's checks and checks. And I think that the idea with the town board taking over this, with the checks and balances, where if the town board granted wetlands permits that people disagreed with, they would vote them out of office. And that the ultimate responsibility is elected officials to make those decisions.
So the, but in the meantime, the zoning officer has denied it unless a variance is granted.
Well, so my point on that, Mr. Domon, is, you know, I think now that he's asked for the interpretation, we can move forward from there. You know, that's, we, I've been on this board for 12 years. Mr. Johnston has been on here for 19 years. And never have we had any sort of a wetlands hearing in my time or in Mr. Johnston's time. And all of those things have gone to the town board. Does anybody else want to weigh in here? Christina, will you let?
Um, she can.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I am concerned as well, because I thought that the nearshore overlay district was put in place and designated to be more protective of wetlands areas. And giving it to the zoning board and giving you the jurisdiction over making determinations of what may and may not be constructed within that, within the regulated area, as well as the vegetative buffer, clearly puts it on your shoulders. The wetlands reference to, in 13312, simply tells you to take a look at that. I think that the check should come with the zoning board, because you have the higher authority and jurisdiction over taking care of the zoning code, of which this is a nearshore overlay district. And therefore, these codes apply to any application that may be encroaching into these buffer and regulated areas. So if, say, you don't want to do a double duty, you don't want, you don't want two committees doing the same, then you should be the ones who are making this decision. And then the town board has to take your opinion and cannot change it. You are the zoning board of appeals. They have no authority to change your decision.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No? All right, I think maybe we can move on to the actual hearing on 71B, Northwestern Parkway. Matt Sherman, you're here to present again?
Yep. We're done. Matt Sherman, I'm here on behalf of the applicants, the Borthwicks, 71B, Northwestern Parkway. We had our two previous hearings. The plan had changed from the first hearing to the second. We've also made some minor changes from that second hearing to now, which we submitted to the board last week. Going to, I'm getting my screenshot. Again, as with last time, I'm not going to go through the whole, go through the whole nuts and bolts of the, from the beginning, but I'll just give you a quick rundown. Okay, very quick. This is the current site, as it, the site as it currently exists.
Can you blow that up a little, Matt?
Yeah, I have it in front of me, just I thought for people in Zoom. And I've got some closer up slides in a second with the more important information. Rocky Point Terrace is, we'll call that, to the east. Two-and-a-half-story existing dwelling, excuse me, covered porches, patios, terrace area coming down as you head toward the water, which we'll say is to the west. This is the existing septic system right here. The existing well is on another slide, but it's right up here in this corner of the building, inside the building's foundation. The, once you come to the C-word side of the house, the property has a little bit of a drop off right here. And then it kind of is a relatively flat grade going out toward the bulkhead, which is, excuse me, running the length of the property along the bay. You've got an existing shed, an existing poolhouse here, patio and swimming pool. All of this stuff is pre-existing. They have certificate of occupancies for everything. The existing poolhouse has a CO for full bathroom, toilet, sink and shower, as well as a living area. This is the latest design plan that has been submitted. It is, it's got the existing site plan, based on the survey, the full-size proposed lot, and then a zoomed-in version of what it is we're looking to do. This is the one we would be asking to be referenced in the, in any possible approvals by the ZBA. All right, so this is the existing site, a little bit zoomed in, a little bit cleaned up. These are our setbacks. We've got our 12-and-a-half-foot side yard setback, 20-foot side yard setback. So the 20 feet is for the swimming pool and any type of accessory building with a full bathroom or with two stories. 12-and-a-half-foot side yard setback is for patios, things like that. We've got a 75-foot wetland setback running along here, and then 100-foot wetland setback running along here. A point of clarification from the last time we were here. I was using the wetland setback to the south of the property as mean high water. When I went out there to look at it after the last hearing, there's a wetlands flag that's just in border of that. So this corrects for the wetlands boundary actually being a little bit further into the property than we first knew it to be. This is our proposed site, our proposed layout. I'll zoom in on that one as well. So we've got a, the larger single building. This building has been moved five, moved further to the, to the east, closer into the property to the main dwelling. Previously, we had 13 and 1/2 feet from the building to the swimming pool. We've shrunk that down to 12 feet. So we've increased our side yard setback to 8 and 1/2 feet from what is the current condition of just under 4 and 1/2 feet. Again, the pool equipment, that goes from being exposed in the side yard to being inside the building. And I'll show you that in just a second where that is. And then the, in a second here too, I'll show you what we've got as far as our different areas that are in noncompliance, different setbacks that are in noncompliance. One of the things that Lisa had asked last time was a comparison between the very first example, the first request and the second request. And then I've got that as well as for the, this current request. This, one of the things that the neighbor had asked was about moving the whole property or the whole set of improvements further into the property. One of the things that precludes us from doing that is the septic system is right down here, just to the west side of the, of the existing house. And it's actually within the 100-foot wetland setback, which is an issue we're going to have to deal with, with the health department and with the town board. We may go in front of them, but we have nowhere else that we can move that septic. So we're basically replacing it in kind or in place. And it's a conventional septic, regular septic tank. We'll be replacing it with an IA septic, nitrogen-reducing septic system. We've also got stormwater drywells and swimming pool drywells being installed near that northerly property line between the proposed improvements. And this is that play area up there by the, getting closer to the house. This is the overall layout. Again, this is the drawing. I put this in here so everybody can see. This is another drawing that we've submitted as something to be referenced if the board chooses to approve this project. The pool house, where you've got a full bathroom. There's an outdoor shower and outdoor changing area, which is covered. You've got a full bathroom. The living space portion of it, there's glass doors front and back, which can be totally retracted into the walls. So when they're retracted, it'll look like it's just an open pavilion type of structure. And then on the far right-hand side, you've got a, the room for the pool equipment and then a small wet bar area.
So that's where the pool heater and the pool pump would all go.
Everything would be in there, yes, exactly. This is a comparison between what's there now, what our last proposal was, or excuse me, our first proposal, and then now what our current proposal is. The drawing on top, this is the front elevation of the existing poolhouse and the existing shed. On the far left-hand side is what the side elevation is of the existing poolhouse. The next one below it is the first proposal. These are considered two separate structures by the town, even though we've got a substantial roof connecting the two of them. So again, we have the pool house and we have the shed. And that's the side profile. Then the third one down is the current proposal. So we've got those glass doors that will retract. And then the bathroom area to the left, storage area to the right, and the side profile. On the right-hand side of this page shows a comparison between the existing, which is in red, and the proposed, which is in gray. But one of the things that has been mentioned is that the proposed construction is going to be significantly more than what's there now. It's certainly a larger building. However, when you look at it in comparison to the way that the existing buildings are and the existing layout is, it is larger, yes. It's wider, but it's also shorter. So I've been, it's been said that this was going to be imposing on the property because of the size of the proposed building. I'm usually pretty good at empathizing with some of these different arguments coming against this. I can't see how this proposed building is going to be imposing as compared to what's there now.
On that, I just want to confirm. I'm seeing you have sliding glass doors on both sides.
Front and back.
Front and back.
And you'll see that here in just a second. That's the original proposal, just for comparison sake. This is what the proposed layout is. You can see where the sliding glass doors have retracted into those pockets on either side. The overall building length is 51 feet. The overall building width is 14 feet. And the height is just basically 10 feet. It's 9 feet 10 inches. So for simplicity's sake, let's say 10 feet.
And so the original space, let's say, that was 45.8, 45 feet 8 inches? The original space, when you take the original building, the sort of space between and that shed, that's 45.
45 and 8, yes, exactly. The first proposal was 5610. And then the second proposal, when we came back and redesigned, we brought it down to 51. So we're basically, you know, 5 and 1/2, 6 feet longer than the current layout. Now, the shed is a small building. So, you know, to say that it's an even swap, it's certainly not an even swap. But in looking at it in relation to what's there now versus to what we're proposing, the overall impact of these buildings, of this new building compared to the existing buildings is an increase from 45 and 8 to 51. And a decrease in height from 11 and 6. from 11, 6 at the highest for the, the poolhouse, excuse me, down to nine foot 10 for the proposed poolhouse.
And then, um, uh, you've increased the distance to the property line from four and a half feet to 8.6 or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You see my exact distance? Excuse me, yeah, the existing, uh, four and a half, the proposed is, um, uh, 8.6.
Okay.
So the variance there is being reduced by 8.8 feet.
And then just, uh, in terms of the distance from the prop, from the, uh, bulkhead, the, this thing is being pushed further uphill, closer to the house, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, let me get back to that site plan, and I can show you exactly what we're looking at. Here we go. I'll zoom in on that. Okay, so the existing poolhouse is 70.1 from the bulkhead. The proposed poolhouse is 87.9. So it gets it completely outside of the, uh, the vegetative buffer. Excuse me, the existing swimming pool from the bulkhead is 56.3. The proposed pool, closest point to the bulkhead, is 66.6 to that wetlands flag that I had talked about to the side of the property. The existing pool is 61.4. The proposed pool does get a little bit closer by sliding it into the property, so it gets closer and it's at 6, it's at 58 feet. So it gets closer by 3.4 feet to that wetlands flag on the adjacent property. It's also important to look at if we want to look at from a wetlands point of view. Our overall coverage, the swimming pool coverage gets reduced by 91 square feet. The patio coverage gets reduced by 182 square feet, and the poolhouse gets completely taken out of the, the vegetative buffer, um, whereas the existing poolhouse was, let's see, was 36 square feet within the vegetative buffer, so that gets completely removed. From a wetland standpoint, from a vegetative buffer standpoint, you know, everything moves back, everything gets, uh, gets significantly reduced.
And all the mechanicals are coming from off the waterside going east, on the, on the east side of the building?
Yeah, and inside. Inside the building, exactly. So right now, they're exposed, and they're 57.7 feet from the bulkhead, so they're going to be 130 plus inside the building on the far end of the building.
Matt, looking, um, at your proposed pool profile, I just want to confirm, there's still 402 square feet though within that vegetative buffer? I just want to make sure we're
Yes, exactly. There's 402 square feet. There's also 41 square feet of patio still within the vegetative buffer, yes.
And have you, I know we talked about, you know, shifting it, moving it. Were you able to talk with the client at all about maybe reducing that pool size to, to, I know they wanted it for a lap pool, but it, was there any discussion about that and?
Yeah, I, I asked them about that, and the, um, the idea of reducing the size of the pool, there's, um, for the purposes of swimming laps and for the layout that they're looking for on it, this is the design that they want to go with, yeah.
Because it is a significantly bigger pool than what's our
Yeah, yes, it is, absolutely.
Definitely. I mean, that's, and if, depending on how things go with our interpretation, that, that'd be something for the town board to take up, and they may demand that the pool get smaller.
I know, we had just discussed it before, so I just want to follow up on it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Perfect.
And I, and I had talked to him about a couple of different things, getting it as far from the, the property line, getting it as far from the wetlands, and that's where that reduction from 13 and a half to 12 feet came from for the building to the swimming pool, which got us that extra distance to the property line. However, they wanted to hold tight on the size of the pool if they can.
Thank you.
Right, does anybody else have any other questions for Matt?
Oh, he answered a couple of, I had.
Okay, so maybe we should just see if anybody in the audience wants to weigh in on this?
Yeah. Mr. Domon.
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you. Um, let me, oh, okay, start my video, just a minute. Okay, yeah, thank you. I'm, can I, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just a, one, a preliminary, um, response to the comment about the original building being 45 feet in length, um, is, is uh, really quite misleading because there are two separate structures and there's, there's open space in two separate buildings. There's not even a connecting roof. So the, uh, the existing, uh, poolhouse is 31 feet, and then there's a very, you know, quaint little shed that's, uh, about seven, I think, seven feet. Uh, so even if you combine the length of the shed of seven feet and add it to the 31, you're at 38 feet.
Uh huh.
Um, and I, and, and so I don't, I think it's, um, not particularly, not accurate to say it's 45. That, just that, I want to make that, um, that comment from the get-go.
Thank you.
And the other, um, I wanted to, I'm going to be referencing a diagram um, that I, um, emailed this afternoon. Um, and, uh, I just wanted to, uh, let's see, you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it. But can you see, can you see me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, so in this, in this diagram here, can you all see that?
Uh, we, we have it, Mr. Domon, the paper version.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to, just reference that, that, um, that I, I've drawn the, uh, the same dimension of, of the existing pool and, uh, turned it 90 degrees in this diagram as well, and used the same dimension of the existing poolhouse and placed it, uh, 12 and a half feet, uh, from the side yard setback. So my comments are as follows. Um, the new location of the poolhouse as a single-story accessory structure without sleeping quarters is shown, um, on, in this, uh, in this diagram to be 12 and a half feet from the side yard setback as well. And, um, uh, when I, reading the code, uh, I did, it, it, the code language, uh, for our, our, our zone says that if you have, uh, a single-story structure and you don't have sleeping quarters, um, 12 and a half feet from the side yard is, um, is compliant. And then, um, but in this new location, it takes the 75-foot shoreline buffer um, completely out of the, out of the equation, uh, as far as the, the pool goes, and that there's, um, ample distance between the pool and the poolhouse. Um, I, I also want to, um, demonstrate through this diagram that there is an option to place the pool and the poolhouse in a, in a attractive location of the house that is in which the need, the proposed need for the variance is in fact self-created. So if you have a situation now where you have self-created the need for the variance, then you don't need a variance, uh, and, and, end of story there. The existing lot improvements are therefore not a hindrance as these accessory existing improvements, namely the pool, the poolhouse and the patio, are desired and requested by the applicant to be entirely demolished and moved now to a different location. So therefore, there is no hindrance. You can't, you can't take advantage of the existing non-conformity when it, when it is going to be demolished and you're not even going to use the footprint. The existing lot dimension is also not an impediment in any way as this diagram demonstrates. The house itself is, is already a non-conforming structure. I'm talking about the residential, uh, structure as it is, as it is, as it is within the front yard and the side yard setback on the south edge. Because of this, uh, this situation of the house, it fortunately makes it much easier to cite the new pool and poolhouse within a zoning compliant area. To the extent that the applicant wishes to build a 50% larger pool and much bigger poolhouse and, uh, on the property than presently exists, this also is self-created. I also want to, um, point out that even if the pool is left as it is proposed, uh, um, the, uh, much very large pool, there is nothing to preclude the poolhouse from, from being placed where I have diagrammed it in the attached diagram I sent this afternoon, which takes it, um, away from the side yard to that 12 and a half foot line. And, and the burden is on the, is on the applicant to show that their need is not self-created. Um, the diagram shows that in fact the need is self-created. Um, I also want to, um, point out that there is precedent for the ZBA to deny this application in a very pertinent way because, um, in there, in the appeal of, uh, oh nine, 2015, on, um, the, well, the, the main house on, on this particular lot, uh, it was ruled that the house may not be expanded um, because it's, it's a, it's a non-conforming struc, non, non, non-conforming location. Now, the applicant has their accessory structure that's non-conforming, and they want to, uh, expand it, uh, as well as expand the pool. Um, all the while, not, not renovating or reconstructing, but demolishing and building anew on a different, um, in a different, uh, site on the lot. And, um, I think there's no, I think, I urge the ZBA to rely on its prior resolution on this very lot, um, when they, um, resolved into the, the language in its 2016 hearing on that, on, on that ZBA appeal. The other, um, the other, uh, uh, resolution of the zoning board, uh, for the same applicant, um, was on, is on their, uh, uh, adjacent lot at 71B Nostrad, and that was a, a resolution in appeal, uh, oh two, uh, dash, 2018, where on, um, on, on April 25, 2018, uh, on this, uh, adjacent lot of, of the applicant, um, it was, it was decided, it was resolved, um, that if the existing foundation must be replaced, the house will be moved to a conforming location. And that's a, that's a direct, uh, uh, that's a direct, uh, quotation. So I, the, these two findings, um, really should be binding, uh, to, on the ZBA to resolve that since the foundation is not being kept, since the footprint is not being kept, the, um, the poolhouse, um, must be moved to a conforming location, and, um, there's no impediment to moving the pool to a conforming location. And, and this is, this is all, regarding the pool, this is all the while respecting the existing septic system that is in place because on the diagram that I, uh, emailed this afternoon, the edge of the pool remains 20 feet, um, from the, uh, uh, edge of the, uh, septic system. So there truly is, is no impediment. Um, and while I, I understand everyone, some, they built the, applicant would like to have a lap pool and would like to have a more luxurious poolhouse, we have to respect that, that there are limits to what can go up on a 0.5, 0.59 acre lot. And, um, we're squeezing way too much into, uh, a 0.59 acre lot that is already the smallest lot in our association of, of, uh, of, uh, five homes in, in our Rocky Point Association where everyone is going to, walks along the path adjacent to this lot, to, to this, uh, to this, uh, lot before the zoning board, and we all, uh, own and share the dock. Um, and, um, I just urge the, the zoning board, um, to, um, to follow its, its prior findings on, on, on this very relevant, these two relevant findings, both on this very lot, uh, as well as the, uh, as well as the adjacent lot. I, I want to, as far as the, the length of the poolhouse, you know, it's a, it's a much different view when you look at a poolhouse that is 51 feet as a single structure than, um, what is there presently, which is a 31-foot pool cabana and a small shed. Um, that's about, uh, you know, some eight feet away from the pool, from the pool cabana. Um, it's, it's just, it's a very different feel. Um, and, um, I think that, that's, that, that, I think that's important. I guess in summation, uh, here, um, the key is, is this need self-created? I have demonstrated unequivocally that the poolhouse can be put in a conforming location further up, uh, towards the front of the, towards, towards the, the, the main dwelling area that puts it outside of, uh, well, well, outside the vegetative buffer, outside the 100-foot buffer, and, um, 12 and a half feet from the property line, uh, particularly since this is a single story without, there's no request to make the sleeping quarters. Um, clearly and unequivocally, uh, the poolhouse, uh, is, uh, where the location requested makes it, um, uh, self, self-created. One could even make it a, a larger poolhouse, for that matter, uh, in the, in the, in the location that I've, that I've diagrammed it. And, um, oh, you know, maybe they can't, maybe they can't put a, a 60, 60-foot long pool, um, uh, in the diagram that I've located, but you could even make it longer than I presently have um, in the diagram that I've shown you, and still make it, put it in a, in a completely conforming location that takes the issues of 13312 out of the equation, uh, takes the, uh, and, and makes it fit very nicely with, with, where the poolhouse would be. Um, I, I, I strongly urge the, the zoning board to really think about the, 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 the diagram that I've shown, um, the comments that I've made, um, and, and give, give it the, 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 the care and attention that I'm, I'm hoping that you will. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Domon, and, and I would say that, um, I like to think that we give every application that comes here, um, real care and attention. Um, and, uh, you know, there, there are, oh, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Domon, thank you.
Does anyone else out in Zoom land want to weigh in on this? Um, yeah, I think Christine has been a lot earlier.
So, so hi, um, my concerns with this specific project are, come from 120, uh, 13312F where it says that the buildings, in fact, with wastewater disposal septic need to be 100 feet away from, uh, the wetlands. So I think that you need to enforce that part of the zoning code in particular. And then the other, uh, curiosity, since these plans have changed a few times, I, my numbers might be wrong, but what I understand is that existing right now within the setback is 379 square feet. And what appears that this new proposal will be, uh, 832 total square feet in the setbacks. That's including the patios and the, and the, and the pool, no, I guess the poolhouse, the accessory building with the plumbing. So that's quite an increase in non-conformity. Whether or not you've minimized it over here and grabbed more over there, it's going from 379 to 832. And it's my understanding that pre-existing non-conforming buildings are supposed to reduce their are supposed to reduce their non-conformity and not increase it. I just wonder how you feel about that. Are my numbers correct? And what would be the total surface area of this?
So the number that I have, I have going from 379 to 638. Those are the numbers that I have.
Second topic.
From 379 to 638. Matt, do you have?
I hadn't totaled them up, but I can look at that.
Okay.
I mean, I looked at his plans, and he said 561 square feet within the setback for the accessory building and 271 square feet for the patio. I don't know if that's changed. I'm looking at the most recent revised plans online.
Okay. She's correct on those two numbers, yeah.
Okay.
And that's 832 square feet total from 379. That's quite a difference and increase, isn't it? That's over 200% increase in the setback. That's not decreasing non-conformity, in my opinion. And I just wonder how you feel about that. And then my other question is, what is the cumulative square footage of this structure and patio and pool now? Is it in fact over 1,000 square feet?
Matt, do we have an actual full number?
What was the question?
The total square footage of the structure, I guess.
The proposed structure?
With the patio.
Yeah, she's got, she's correct. And the, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we've got for the proposed pool house, 561. Proposed patio, 271. The existing, you've got a pool house at 324, the shed at 55, and the patio at 124, which I believe is 503. So we're increasing it by about 330 square feet, it looks like.
Okay, I didn't hit the patio in, the extra 124 in the patio. In any case, it's still an increase in non-conformity. And the whole point of zoning and these new districts was to, and I thought the purpose of the zoning board to some degree was to consider that, that you want non-conforming buildings to become not more conforming. The whole goal of that is to become conforming, not to increase non-conformity. So I think I'd like you to take that into consideration in your deliberations on this project.
Thank you, we will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else want to weigh in? No? So I think I'd like to close the hearing.
Could I weigh in on that, something?
Sure, Mr. Domon.
Yeah, just a follow-up comment to what was just said. When one considers increasing the, an increase in the non-conformity, if you look at each one individually, you're increasing the non-conformity, increasing the non-conformity on the pool, on the pool house very substantially from 320. You're doubling it effectively. When one, if one, if one just looks at the pool house, if you add the shed plus the pool house, which was 379, you're still now at 650. So now you're increasing the non-conformity even if you combine the two. You're increasing the non-conformity with respect to the patio is much larger. So in that respect, the increase in the non-conformity on the patio aspect, and you're separately increasing the non-conformity with respect to the pool. So both individually as well as combined, we're increasing the non-conformity. And I just, I think there needs to be a correction, a formal correction in the application which states that this need is not self-created. That is an error in the application, and I would like the zoning board to make notation of this error in the application.
So, Mr. Domon, when we do our worksheet, we will come up with our own version of events so that if we feel that it's a self-created thing, we will note that in our worksheet. All right, so I'd like to close the hearing. We'll leave it open to written correspondence until, is it March 8? I think, because our work session is on the 15th. Is that correct? I have the dates. I just want to make sure I have the dates right. Yeah, so we'll leave it open to written correspondence until March 8, and we will discuss this at our work session on March 15. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the hearing.
A second.
Okay, we're doing a roll call vote. William Johnston?
Yes.
Thomas Graffanino?
Yes.
Lisa Kreckeler?
Yes.
And Phil Diorio votes yes as well. I'd like to have a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all.
26.
836.
27.
Oh, 26, yeah, I was going to say.